Starting with a joint meeting with the school board. So I'd like to welcome the school board members. My understanding is Jeremy will be coming along in just a few moments, but we can go ahead and get started.
So are, we were planning to provide the budget update for the school department in the new business section?
You know, regular meeting, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes.
Are there any additional updates or anything that, on the agenda to discuss? Do we have anything from council that they would like to discuss with the school board? Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm just curious, we've had discussions, I think, in the past about staffing issues and just more curious than anything, maybe the public would like to know, teachers, ed techs, bus drivers, maybe just a brief update on that?
Yeah, I'm happy to provide that. We shared some information at the last school board meeting. We are in a good position overall for teaching staff for the most part. Bus drivers continue to be a concern, though we're not in as, as bad a place as we were maybe a couple of months ago with really having our transportation director having to do some bus routes herself. So we're in a position where we're able to fill the routes that we have, though we would still, we are still hiring for bus drivers and still have some folks that are in the training process for CDL licensure through that. Ed techs and substitutes continue to be an area of concern. We've started to look a little bit at our hiring processes for those. We had a job fair onsite in Biddeford for all three school departments and we were able to collect, I believe we had about 23 folks come through and were able to process applications onsite. For many of those folks, I think about half of them ended up completing applications onsite. And we've been looking at the onboarding process with our staff members in the substitute and ed tech role to ensure that we're keeping folks in those roles and trying to help them find really where their best fit is within the school department so that they have an opportunity to kind of see some of the different schools, a little bit more of a deeper orientation for those folks. So it's not just being on a call list and coming in, but really finding schools within the department that are a good fit.
Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Any other council members have anything that they would like to ask? Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. More of a, less of a question, more of things I'm hearing from our citizens, that the bus right is being much appreciated. They're utilizing it. I use it myself, so I'm always looking and be like, oh, we got five minutes left. I appreciate that because it's making mornings less stressful, or in some cases more stressful because we're like, yeah, go right now. It's about a minute away. But I'm hearing good positive comments from people in my neighborhood specifically. And I'm sure it's helping with the onboarding process of new bus drivers or last minute changes. So I definitely want to see this continue. As an app, I don't know what the cost is, but so far I'm seeing benefit. And I haven't heard anything bad, to be honest, and that's a good thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. We just heard from our bus drivers today that they were enjoying it. It certainly takes some time to learn anything new, but they can see the value and feel like it's helping their routes. And just an add-on to the earlier staffing piece, we're also hosting a staffing event tomorrow at the train station in Saco to drum up additional employees.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other members of the council? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thanks. Can we just get an update for the public on the school construction process and where we are and timelines and any changes?
So we are currently still looking at the parcel on Route One North. And we have two appraisals that came in and the third appraisal just came in today. We've been meeting regularly with the Department of Education, which is a negotiation process in terms of what their allocation is for building projects and what we are advocating for Saco schools for the next 50 years, looking to have a building that's sustainable for that time. And so there's quite a bit of push and pull in terms of, I think we're about 30,000 square feet off of where they want us to be. And so it will be a matter of continuing to articulate areas which we feel are important for Saco schools and/or eventually determining that we will either cut some of those things to meet their allocation or come up with additional local funding if in fact that square footage is critically important to our programs.
Great. Thank you so much. Anyone else? My understanding is I need to congratulate school board member Purple. She has just recently been elected the new chair of the school board. Congratulations. Anything from the school board? Okay, not seeing anything. I don't know if we should wait a few more minutes if Jeremy shows up or...
Was there anything else on the agenda on your side that Jeremy would have comment on?
No.
That's pretty much it. Okay, well, I would like to thank you all for coming. And we will be getting the budget update through the new business item on the agenda. Okay, so I would like to officially call the Saco City Council meeting to order for Monday, February 13th at 6:36. Would like to recognize that all members are present with the exclusion of Mayor Doyle this evening. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Okay, there is nothing in general. Item four this evening. Item number five, we have committee correspondents to council. Are there any committee correspondents? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I had the pleasure today of working in two roles. My Rotary Club, Rotary Club of Saco Bay met at the Ferry Beach Association Dining Commons. My Rotary colleagues and I packed 365 meals that were prepared in that kitchen so that age-friendly Saco could then deliver those meals with a cadre of their own volunteers to 365 people in the Biddeford-Saco, Old Orchard Beach area. Elderly folks, many of them shut-ins for them. In winter, this is somewhat of a highlight for them. The meal was very robust, chicken, rice, vegetable, cupcake and salad. And I also want to acknowledge that the Rotary Club sponsors an interact club at Thorn Academy. The students at Thorn Academy put together 200 Valentine cards, and each home that had a meal delivery, many of the homes had multiple meals, each received a Valentine's card as well. So it was just a wonderful, wonderful community event to, in support of the mission of age-friendly Saco. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee correspondents? Okay, not seeing anyone. That moves us to item number six, public comment. We do not have anyone signed up for public comment, but if there is any member of the audience wishing to speak, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comment to three minutes. Okay, not seeing anybody wishing to be recognized. Takes us to item number seven, the approval of the minutes for February 6, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to approve the minutes. We have no consent items agenda tonight. We have no action items this evening. We do have four items under new business. New business item A is the quarter two budget update for the city. And I believe that is Director Salas to present.
Good evening, everyone. The information materials I'll be covering this evening are included in the council packet, which is on the city's website on the council page. The city of Saco ended the second quarter of fiscal year 2023 in a strong financial position, happy to report. Net use of fund balance was $603,228. Expenses were tracking 1% behind forecast while revenues were tracking 3% ahead. The city's undesignated fund balance was at 16.27% of the adopted budget as of December 31st, 2022. January is typically the lowest month in terms of cash position between tax dates, so the city's undesignated fund balance may fall a bit lower next month. As of December 31st, our cash position was $8.9 million higher than forecasted. So we maintain a strong cash position even above our forecasted strong cash position. In terms of the unassigned fund balance, I did want to provide an additional update. I received the school financials from our auditing firm late last week, and I did reconcile those. The city's undesignated fund balance as of the end of the year was a little bit higher than what's reported here, between 17 and 18%. However, budgeted use of unassigned fund balance between the 23 adaptive budget and amendments that have happened since expended almost in full the surplus from the end of last year. So moving into the expenses side, expenses were 1% or $316,184 behind forecast in the second quarter. Capital projects, county tax, finance, insurance, parks and rec, public works, school and transfers are all on target because they are within 5% of their respective forecasts. The remainder I will list now. So assessing is tracking 16% behind forecast. Contracted services are below forecast. The department is actively training on GIS and looking to expend those contracted services funds for mapping services through the rest of the year. City administration is 12% behind forecast. Zoom licenses budgeted for this fiscal year have been replaced with Microsoft Teams, which is included in the city's license for Microsoft Office 365. So those funds are not going to be expended. Dues of memberships were also $7,800 behind forecast. City clerk is tracking 17% behind forecast. General assistance is behind forecast by $27,342. This is offset partially by lower than forecasted state revenue. Code enforcement is 11% behind forecast. This is driven primarily by some turnover in the department, which has resulted in savings on the base pay line. Communications is 6% behind forecast. This is being driven primarily by light spending on printing and minor equipment lines. I did reach out to Director Roy and there is a plan to expend those funds by the end of the year. Contingency is 56% behind forecast. Tax abatements came in 50% lower than budgeted, and we may need to revisit tax abatements and what we budget for that in the coming year, since they have been light the last couple of years. Senior tax rebates issued were $49,441 versus an appropriated budget of $150,000. Very little of the city's contingency funding has been spent to date. Council is 22% behind forecast. Miscellaneous expenses and travel training expenses are tracking behind forecast by $2,350. Economic development, there's a $250 amount that was booked to the general fund lines in error. I have reclassified that to the downtown development district, which covers all of our economic development department expenses, and closed the general fund economic development lines. So we won't make that mistake again. Fire department is 6% ahead of forecast. There was a fiscal year 2022 main water bill for hydrants that hit in fiscal year 23 due to the timing of a purchase card payment. That has been reclassified to contingency. So contingency actually is a little bit more expended than reported here. Fire department, a little bit less. Fire department is also running high on overtime, $88,000 above forecast. Fringe benefits is 12% ahead of forecast. The workers' comp payment due in January was paid one month early in December. Vacation payouts exceeded budgeted amounts by $100,000. Main purse contributions exceeded budgeted amount by $119,202. Much of this is driven by buybacks for employees who did not formally decline membership in main purs when they were hired. So if an employee does not formally decline, you have to offer them the opportunity to join, and the employer is obligated to pay back funds for their tenure to date at the city. However, I have, HR has worked very hard to build out a much more robust onboarding process, and we do not anticipate that to be an issue going into the future. Grants. Grant funded purchases and payroll totaled $17,313 to date. One note about this number, there are actually more grants that the city has received than what's being reported here. This is just grants that are booked to the general fund because in the same year we get the grant revenue and expend the grant funds. Grants that roll from year to year are reported elsewhere on the city's financials. For future updates, I do plan to actually pull in a comprehensive grant number because I think it's important for council to know all the great work our departments are doing to get grant funding where available. HR is 17% behind forecast. A credit was booked to the miscellaneous account in error. The entry has been reversed. Without the erroneous credit entry, the department is on target. IT is 16% behind forecast. The Microsoft Office software fee, which is one of the more significant fees in the department, has not yet been billed for the year. Planning is 27% behind forecast. The department has significant funds available for contracted services and is considering how best to expend those funds. The police department is 14% behind forecast. The department base pay line is behind forecast by $259,564. Another $183,000 remains from the appropriated $250,000 that was appropriated out of unassigned fund balance for upfront research regarding the RMS CAD migration project. The department is continuing to research options for this project as some of our neighboring communities are getting quotes as high as $1 million for implementation of the project. And we really are hoping to find a more cost-effective solution before we bring that a final recommendation to council. Solicitor is 21% behind forecast. So this is commendable conservative use of the solicitor. That line has run hot for several years now, and it's nice to see that the use of our city solicitor has moderated significantly this year. Supported entities are 6% behind forecast. The main municipal association bill has not yet come in for fiscal year 23, and the conservation commission and HPC has spent very little of their annual appropriations. I do reach out to those commissions on a monthly basis and let them know where they're at in terms of expending their budget. Okay, so that's everything on expenses. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Director Salas? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just to, I want to stay up here and not get in the weeds. I just want to make sure, you know, we, my, my understanding is that even though we may be under budget on some payroll, that sometimes gets offset by the overtime we have to pay for the folks who have to pick up the slack for the people we haven't been able to hire.
Yes, so the overtime lines are over budget year-to-date, over forecast. If you look at the police department, in total, they're tracking behind $369,000. There's $183 for the CAD, $260 for base pay. That would get you a little bit north of $400,000. And so that difference is what the overtime is over budget.
Yeah, I think this is an important issue for us when we come into the next budget, be thinking about not only pay increases, but this challenge we have with filling positions. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay, not seeing any?
I'll continue onto the revenue side then. So revenues, capital projects, fire and ambulance planning, and real and personal property taxes are all on target because they are within 5% of forecast. Rental income has a negative balance. So the finance department is working to clear some old rental bills deemed uncollectible. The write-offs hit the revenue line. So when you book a debit to a credit account balance like rental income, that shows up as a negative in the report. If rental income through the end of the year is not sufficient to cover the write-offs, we would reclass those over to contingency to cover. City clerk revenues are 12% behind forecast. This is related to lower-than-budgeted general assistance reimbursements, as we discussed earlier. Code enforcement revenues are 8% behind forecast. Development activity has begun to slow. We saw some of the highest code enforcement fees over the last couple of years that we've ever seen, and some of the heat in the, in that market is starting to cool. Communications franchise fees are 5% forecast. Cable franchise fees are lower than anticipated. Spectrum and charter, we're having some challenges with getting them to the negotiating table regarding the contract. I know communications is pursuing some different options in getting them to the table to renegotiate. The other challenge with franchise fees is they are based on cable subscriptions. So as cable subscriptions decline in favor of internet, we're going to see some loss on that line, more than likely. Finance fees are 19% behind forecast. Tax lien interest was capped at 4%. In past years, it's been 7% or 8%, and that drives a lot of what's in the finance fees line. So that's something, again, we'll kind of visit a little bit more closely as we get into budget and make sure we're forecasting that appropriately. Fire and ambulance fees. Saco has collected $631,896 in ambulance fees. That's cash collection year-to-date. $242,301 of those were transferred to the general fund to offset staff costs. So in prior years, ambulance fee transfer to the general fund was as high as $760,000. That was resulting in excessive use of fund balance in the ambulance fund, which is designated mostly for capital equipment, ambulance purchases, the equipment that's involved, and then on a secondary basis, the operation and personnel costs of ambulance transport. However, we are now experiencing much higher ambulance fee revenues than we've experienced in the last, I think, probably ever. It is quite likely we'll end the year at 1.2 million in ambulance revenue fees. And so should the department look to expand, there are some options in terms of funding sources on the table. Grant revenue, $19,263 year-to-date. Again, that's general fund only. Interest earnings. So we have collected $250,617 year-to-date between the city's investment account in Morgan Stanley and the repurchase agreement in the city's main operating account. We are working with the, with our investment advisors to lock in strong interest rates through the next budgeting cycle, and we're seeing rates as high as 4.7%. So on our cash balance, which is north of 20 million, that should be significant for the coming year. Reparation fees, 8% ahead of forecast. The rec department is on track for another million-dollar year. Very exciting. Congratulations to Director Summer. Those increase in fees will help offset some of the personnel costs that we are expecting to see in the new year as minimum wage has been set to an 8.2% increase for 2023. Police department fees, 56% behind forecast. The city needs to book the revenue from the school department to cover the school resource officer. I'm working with Director Clemens on what that exact amount should be, and then work with the school department to book that transfer. Currently, the Thornton Academy School Resource Officer cannot be staffed due to the number of open positions in the police department. Public works fees, this is mostly car excise task, is 10% ahead of forecast. Excise taxes are running $204,148 above budget. Transfers- Transfers station fees are also running $27,132 ahead of forecast. State assistance is 13% ahead of forecast. State revenue sharing is 26% ahead of forecast year-to-date, so the state has had tremendous revenue. A lot of that has to do with inflation, so as prices go up, the state is, the state taxes, sales taxes, a percentage of that, those transaction amounts. And so the state of Maine is enjoying significant revenue, and we are also enjoying our state-mandated 5%, I believe in this year, of those revenue sharings. So that's been a significant boost of the budget. It does offset our use of fund balance for the year. Okay, miscellaneous revenues. Several sizable payments were deposited here in error. Those payments are under review, and actual revenues are less than 10,000, so we identified that there were some memorial tree donation amounts for Parks and Rec that were booked here in error, and we've moved those to their appropriate accounts. Use of fund balance. The city has budgeted 852,800 use of fund balance. Revenues are budgeted but never booked here in order to ensure the city approves a balanced budget. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council? Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just one quick question on the fire ambulance fees. I just update on the new billings and collections process and how that's going.
Mm-hmm. Pardon me. We've had a lot of success, especially in this fiscal year. We tweaked a few things. We, after launching, we identified that there was a need to have a collections agency to catch people at the end of the collections cycle, if you will. We institute, we partnered with LifeQuest over the summer, and then Director Mathurn actually sends letters directly out from City Hall prior to transmitting those collections over as sort of a last chance, and we've found that many times people are more responsive to a letter from Saco City Hall than they are from our billing partner, and so we've been able to significantly boost revenues that way. I do think, in general, there was some confusion when we initially brought QuickMed Claims online. Patients weren't sure where the bill was coming from or what it was related to. I think with all of the efforts that have been underway for last chance letters from City Hall and instituting collections agency, people are aware that QuickMed Claims is our biller now. They are being very responsive, and I've also worked very closely with our lead at QuickMed Claims to ensure that we have a really strong accounts receivable team that's really working those back balances, and we've seen some good outcomes from that as well. Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, not seeing any.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, item B under new business is the quarter two budget update for the school department.
Good evening, everyone. In front of you, you'll see our financials through January 31st. I've gone ahead and done one more month. We're currently running about 96.5%. What that truly entails is encumbrance of all of our salaries and benefits through the end of the year. We've encumbered several of our substitute lines, as well as our remaining balances and utilities. However, these are what is currently budgeted. There's still many unforeseen expenses on whether or not our oil is actually going to come in where it's supposed to be, as well as our general operating supplies such as janitorial cleaning products. Most of the products for the schools, for teachers, have been ordered, but there are still some several things that are ordered come springtime, so that is not encumbered in those expenses. Two main areas of where we anticipate being over budget for the year will be our tuition rates, both with Thoron Academy and our public sectors for our vocational schools. The MAT came in significantly higher than what we had budgeted. Luckily, we had a slight reserve of students, so it kind of offset one another, but we are still about $130,000 over budget on that line. The other area is our EL budget. We've had significant increase in personnel for language, for the students that need, so you'll see that will be over budget as well due to hiring of a new staff member. All of our remaining projects are also encumbered in this budget, so if you look at our operations, you'll see remaining painting that we have, that we'll be doing over the vacation weeks, and any additional door work and roofing work will be done. So that is all encumbered and focused in this financial statement. Turning to the revenue, we will be on budget. There's essentially one glaring revenue that we haven't really received as main care, mainly because they're also in the process of changing the rates. I guess I believe it was January 1st. My special ed director, Ormeg, might be able to talk a little bit more about it, but they were held off billing the final months, but we will be receiving that in the rear. But we will probably be still under budget that due to staffing needs. If we don't have the staff to bill for those services, we won't be receiving the revenue. But overall, we should offset the expenses and revenues for that line. But overall, we're going to have a really healthy end-of-the-year budget, hopefully, as long as nothing else happens from now to the end of the year. We feel pretty strong about it. We ended the last year in a healthy position as well, finally, having a positive fund balance, and we're looking to hopefully maintain that throughout the next few years. Any questions on any of the departments or revenues?
Great, thank you for that. Any questions from council? Okay, not seeing any questions. Thank you, Jason. Okay, next item up for our new business, item C is a Chapter 83 update. Do we have anybody that will be presenting that?
I believe our planning department may potentially be speaking on this.
Hello. The planning department and the finance department have been working together to bring forward Chapter 83 revisions. What this revision does is it better aligns our current ordinance with the new chapters that were adopted in 2021, and we also removed the mention of percentage amounts with how we handle deposit accounts. We didn't take that out. What we did was we referenced it into the fee schedule. Right now, the way our systems work, this will work out better with how we're actually managing these funds. We're working closely to make sure that we have a good standard operating procedures going forward on everything, so this is one of the first items that we're tackling moving
Any questions from council? Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would just want to suggest, I have no problems with the text that's in here, but a potential consideration for additional language, and that would have to do with what I, I hope we'll be able to get to at some point, and that is recovering monitoring fees for compliance to whether it's a condition of, of an approval that goes beyond the actual construction phase of a project, the compliance with some of our contract zones have provisions within them that require some monitoring, and whether or not we can, we can address that, even though we may not need it now, we might need it later, and, and perhaps some consideration for funding mechanisms. You know, you've got reserve accounts that you use during the project, but when it's done, it's done, and give some consideration to how we might invoice and expect a payment for those, and more particularly, if we don't get paid, how are we going to recover that money? So just some general, general thoughts on that, and I think that was pretty much it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Deputy Mayor, may I address a couple of questions? Counselor Hatch, I think that's a great thought on how we do things. You'll notice there is a language in there that mentions compliance monitoring. Right now, we actually do open up a separate inspection escrow account that we use the developer funds that are in the deposit, and we roll them over into a compliance monitoring phase, and then we debit the city staff's time from that, but there may be language that can make that more clear, but that is part of our procedure now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so this will be coming up on an agenda in the future, and Counselor Gunn, you are the council resource. You are okay with that? Thank you. Okay, next up, we have item action D, excuse me, new business action, item D, contract zone request for 265 North Street. And that is planning as well.
The planning department has been working with the applicant Ted Arcand of Arcand Properties for this contract zone request. As you know, the city's overall goal is to reduce the number of contract zones we have, so I do feel a little awkward standing here before you as one of my first items back in the planning department. But it was here from previous work that the applicant's been trying to get this use approved through various methods for the last two years, and this was the path laid out after trying to get a zoning amendment and some other items. So staff has worked closely with the applicant. The applicant is here in the room in case there are any questions that need to be addressed for new business. We've also been very careful about explaining compliance monitoring moving forward and trying to make sure there were pieces of this built into the contract where compliance would be easier.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Is this, when I was council liaison, I remember this coming forward, has anything been approved? Are they in the location at all?
They are in the location not as a catering use, but as like an office space where they schedule events out of.
Okay, so they've already completed that portion of it, and now they're looking to expand into the catering event side?
Yes, and add a kitchen.
Thank you. Okay, not seeing any other questions or comments. Thank you. And Counselor Gunn, this one is assigned to you as well?
Thank you.
Okay, that completes the new business items for tonight. Item 11, we have administrative update.
All right, thank you. An update on Saco's climate action plan. The grant-funded climate adaptation action planning process is ongoing. SNPDC has worked with the city on its greenhouse gas emissions inventory, which will be complete very soon. SNPDC is now moving toward the next steps of the project, which include a baseline assessment and a vulnerability assessment. Some of the vulnerability assessment work will be informed by the larger regional vulnerability assessment SNPDC is currently completing. The city has this week a meeting with them to discuss the, sorry, to discuss and organize the next steps of the project. Energy and Sustainability Committee has also joined the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives, which is one of the premier organizations for local climate planning work. And lastly, this is some great work in collaboration with the communications department. We have launched a webpage for community members to look at, so it's sacomaine.org/climate, and we will continue to build out this webpage for more, as more information becomes available, and there will be more opportunities for public input. I just want to thank our planning department, in particular, Emily Cole Prescott, who's here, for their work and continued advocacy here. An update on the city hall repairs that I told you about last week due to a pipe bursting behind the stage here during the deep freeze a couple of weekends ago. We did sustain some major damage to the floor below, the rear half of the first floor. Due to that, we are going to have to do some major renovation work. It's probably going to be a couple of months, and it will involve moving some departments out to temporary offices. So assessing, we'll be moving to the public workspace. The codes department will be moving to the first floor conference room, and economic development will be moving to the school department, and thank you to the school department and Jeremy for allowing us a couple of offices over there to help us out during this time. And communications will be updating the public on any office moves and where they need to go in the coming months. Update on our agendas, coming up on February 27th, which is a workshop meeting, we will have our annual council goal setting exercise. We'll discuss LD 2003 also, and any additional items, please have those to me by February 22nd for placement on that agenda. On March 6th, we'll have our market analysis and implementation plan presentation, Chapter 83 public hearing, and we'll have a presentation from Will Armitage of Southern Maine Finance Authority. He'll be here to update us on their activities. Just a quick update, the LRPC, or the Long Range Planning Committee, will be back meeting on February 28th at 5:00 PM, and again, thank you to planning for nudging this along and getting it back up and running, so they will be here 5:00 PM February 28th. Lastly, I just want to announce a bid opportunity for the city, and this is our Hillview Avenue-Jenkins Road intersection realignment and signalization project. The city of Saco was listening bids for Buxton Road, Route 112, Hillview Avenue, Jenkins Road intersection realignment and signalization. Bids must be submitted on the bid response form in a sealed envelope marked Buxton Road, Route 112, Hillview Avenue, Jenkins Road intersection realignment and signalization, and will be accepted until 1:00 PM on Wednesday, March 15th at the Saco Public Works Facility, 15 Phillips Spring Road, Saco Maine. At that time, there will be a public opening of all bids. There will be a pre-bid conference happening on Wednesday, March 8th at 10:00 AM at the Saco Public Works Department. Any questions should be directed to our public works department, either Joe Waveria or Pat Fox there. Thank you. How about to take any questions?
Any questions or comments for city administrator Kenrath? All right, next item up is item 12, council discussion and comment. Is there any discussion or comment from counselors? Not seeing any. That moves us to item 13, executive session. Is there a motion to move into executive session? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, sorry. Be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, C, discussion on the use of property, and C, economic development.
Thank you. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 for executive session. We will take a quick five-minute recess.[1604.82]
Okay, we are back from executive session at 8:32. Is there a motion to come back from executive session?
So moved.
That was... Oh, Councilor Hatch, I'm sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Archer. There is no report from executive session. So roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to come out of executive session. Next on the agenda is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
And Councilor Johnston? And roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes to adjourn at 8:33. Thank you and have a great night.